All right, so, welcome to Granbury City Hall, everybody. We're going to call this meeting to order. It's a Granbury City Council meeting at 600, I'm sorry, 116 West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. It's 6:00 on September 4th. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. I'd like to make a note that Mayor Ninn Hewlett and Councilperson Tony Allen are not present today, even though I've been informed that the mayor is watching, so we should be on our best behavior. The invocation is going to be led by Pastor Dan Jones of the Triple Cross Cowboy Church here in Granbury, and the pledges are going to be led by Councilperson, Councilmember Trish Reiner.
Would you pray with me? Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight and we ask for your wisdom and your guidance. Lord, you've blessed this city, you've blessed this county, and this state, and this country, and we know why. It's because it was founded on your principles, and, Lord, we just want to continue that here tonight. And so, we ask that you would give this body the wisdom and discernment to make those right decisions, Lord, that, not that you would bless everything we do, but that you would give us wisdom to do things that you would bless. So, please, just be with us tonight. Let your spirit be present in this room, and just bless these who have these decisions to make. We ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And to the Texas flag. Our Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one individual.
And now, we'll go into the citizens' participation part of the meeting, and this allows the citizens to present concerns and address issues that are not part of the agenda tonight. Everybody that signed up tonight pretty much knows the rules, so we'll jump right into it. J.C. Campbell, if you don't know the rules, I don't know anybody that would. So, come on up.
Mayor Protim, Councilmembers, City Manager, and Attorney. You know, whenever the city gets a lot of heat at times, they get a lot of thank-yous too. You get a lot of heat, but I want to let you have a thank-you tonight, because if you know where the old powerhouse, power lighthouse is over on the city property, right before you go across the railroad track, you go across that, going across railroad track, and before you get to the next stop sign, there was about four, three or four trees in there that had been dead for about four or five years, or six years. And it's been in the past, when I come down that way, I go onto the other side, I go onto the east side of the road, because I'm afraid one of those dead branches is going to fall. Somebody from the city made it happen. They got those old trees cut down, and I want to say thanks for the city for doing that, because it was really a hazard, and it was just, you know, you didn't ever know when one of those limbs is going to break, but you did it. You got it taken care of, so thanks a lot to the people who did it for you.
Very good. Thanks, J.C. Julia Pennell.
Good evening. I'm Julia Pennell, 403 West Bridge. Good evening, Mayor Protim Mobley, City Council Manager Kaufman, and all those who sit on the dais. I'm here honored with J.C. Campbell, Fay Landham, Bob Pennell, and I are all members of Friends and Memorial Lane, and we are having an event for all ages, we're calling it, remembering what we say we will never forget. So, on 9/11, at 7:00 prompt, we are inviting everyone in the city or the county to come join us at the Jim Burks Firefighter Memorial Park at Memorial Lane. It's going to be sight, sound, and song. There will be a lady that would have been in the hotel had she not been delayed by one day. There will be a gentleman who's, he and his family, their best friend was one of the pilots. We will hear their stories. There's some of the most beautiful music and videos that Rich Merrill has supplied, so we encourage everyone to come. I want to thank the Hood County Prayer Task Force for joining us. We want to thank the city of Granbury is always for supporting us. Tony Mobley, you'll see the beautiful flags that now fly 24/7.
Hey, don't mention my name and beauty in the same sentence.
Okay. Well, okay, the beautiful flags. Tony Mobley did that and sponsored this, the Granbury Chamber of Commerce, the Granbury Multimedia, and Walmart. So, you can see the partnership that is coming. So, I encourage everyone to come. One of the things it says, "Then I heard the voice of the Lord saying, 'Whom shall I send? And who will go for us?'" And I said, "Here am I. Send me." So, the evening is about those who went in when others were trying to get out, those that were on the stairwell and couldn't get out. So, help us come. You will be moved, so bring Kleenex. There'll be parking nearby, so come and be ready. Bring chairs if you want to, but we look forward to everyone being in attendance. And thank you again, the Parks Department. We cannot say enough for the city being a part, and Aaron and his crew. They are just really very good to us and to the city, so we thank you for that.
Thank you, Julia. Tom Baker.
Julia meant Beauty and the Beast, so check whichever box you want to on that one. And it took you six years until they cut down the trees?
I don't know. I don't think that.
Tom Baker, 1002 West Pearl.
You're on the clock.
I don't see a clock yet, so they obviously haven't started that one.
I do.
That one doesn't count. Last few weeks, we've been talking about, what are we going to do if there's a tie vote on City Council, when we have six people voting, or four people voting? It doesn't make any difference, really. If you can't get enough people to vote positively, it wasn't a good enough issue to vote for or against in the first place. So, if you've got six people and it goes 3-3, obviously, like I said, it wasn't a good issue to bring up in the first place. Do I still have time? I'm done.
Tom Baker's always bringing common sense to the podium. Okay, now, we'll move on to our consent agenda. These are items that are routine and previously discussed items, and will be approved in one motion. Should a City Councilmember wish to discuss any item, it will be moved to the deliberation agenda. Item number one is consider approving the City Council meetings from August 21st, regular meeting. Number two, consider approving a 2018 pavement reconstruction agreement with Radon Inc. to reconstruct, seal, and re-stripe approximately 1,500 square yards of airport ramp area utilizing funds through Tech dot routine airport maintenance program. The repair area is located on the north side of the open tee hangers from Howard Clements Road to the Abgas fuel pit. Number three, consider approving a proposal from Institute of Form Technologies, I probably messed that up, LLC for Phase II CIPP of the 2018 sewer rehabilitation project. Number four, consider awarding bid number 17-18-03 for the Granbury Regional Airport Electric Distribution Relocation Project, distribution construction material to Anexter and Techline. Council, you've had a chance to look over these items. Is there any item you'd like to discuss or pull off the consent agenda? With no response, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion to accept these items on the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Couch, and a second by Councilman Trish Reiner. Any more discussion, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we move on to the deliberation agenda. Item number five is a public hearing to consider the following request of Gary Plant. He's going to execute an FIA 18-09 buy-in between the city of Granbury and Gary Plant developer for the construction of approximately 643 linear feet of public water line, 330 linear feet of public sanitary sewer line, and 565 linear feet of public sidewalk, and 55 linear feet of private storm drainage. The second part of that is replat lot 3R of Granbury Village Edition as lots 3R1 and 3R2 of the Granbury Village Edition. The property is at Acton Highway, north of Tom Cox Road, and I'm going to turn this over to Shad. He's got something to tell us.
I do, thank you. Mayor Protim, City Council, City Manager. I'm Shad Rotten with our Community Development Department, pulling in for Scott tonight. So, the property is highlighted in blue. It's located on the curve of Acton Highway, if you're familiar with where the Pet Hospital is or Tom Cox Road. It's right across the street from that. It's about two and a half acres, and what they're proposing to do tonight is subdivide. It's an existing lot of record, and they're looking to subdivide that and construct in the future assisted living and medical office facilities on this property. So, here's kind of a preliminary site plan we worked through with the plat. Like I said, it's undeveloped right now, but with this site plan, you can see the building layouts. The two larger buildings are the assisted living facilities, the smaller building is the medical office. Acton Highway's a local road, so they'll work with the city for the approach permits. There's two proposed. They have an FIA associated with this tonight. Like you stated, it's for water along the frontage of the property, some internal sewer, some sidewalks along the frontage, and approximately two streetlights. So, they have submitted their FIA. They have all their required surety bonds in place, so we're able to bring this plat to you as well as FIA tonight. So, again, you can see this is a copy of the plat, how the lots will be laid out. They're typically going, it's the larger lot, 3R1, and then 3R2 is going to be a relatively smaller lot located kind of to the southeast of the property. Not only will this plat abandon some existing easements that were associated with the previous plat, it will also dedicate new easements to be in line with what they're proposing on their site plan, i.e. utility easements, fire lane easements, things like that to support the property. So, here's our formal application on the left side of the screen. What this signifies is they have addressed all comments to the Development Review Committee or DRC. We also have our engineer's memo on the right, which basically states that there's no further engineering comments associated with this replat. We do have two variance requests associated with the plat tonight, the first being the section 31i of the subdivision ordinance. What this section states is, when developing against an unimproved road, developers are required to either escrow the funds to improve one half of their roadway. What the variance request is for tonight is to delay that, and basically put a note on the plat, which you have in quotations here, at such time that the city does take on a CIP project for that improvement, they'll escrow at that time. Basically, what that does is you get the cost of the improvements at that rate when they do it, as opposed to getting it now, and those costs may rise in the future. So, the staff was comfortable with that, as well as the city engineer. The second request is regarding sewer extension. Per letter of the law of our subdivision ordinance, they have to extend that through the frontage. In this particular scenario, they were able to extend it internally into the property and still provide connection points, which meets the intent of the ordinance. Again, staff and the city engineer were supportive of both of these variance requests. So, you have the memo here from the city engineer recommending approval at the meeting of August 20th. P&amp;Z also recommended approval of the variances, as well as the replat by unanimous vote. And with that, I believe that concludes my presentation. I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor Protim.
Thank you. So, this is a public hearing. We'll go ahead and open it up to the public. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak? Well, if there is not, we'll go ahead and close it to the public input. Council, are there any questions? Okay, I have one.
Sure.
So, this came before us several months ago, and there were concerns about lighting, and there was concern about sidewalks. So, can we talk about how those have changed in this latest?
Yeah, so, that's part of this FIA. They will be extending sidewalks through their frontage, and they will also be installing two streetlights adjacent to their drive approaches. So, those costs have been rolled into their FIA, and those will be improvements that are required once they do their water and sewer improvements. So, there will be sidewalks, and there will be streetlights.
All right. Thank you. So, if there's no further discussion by the council, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion in reference to this item.
Second.
Second.
So, we have a motion by Councilperson Corrigan, and a second by Councilman Couch. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number six, the public hearing, and considering the following requests of the Episcopal Community Trust of Granbury, Texas. We're looking to execute an FIA 18-10 buy-in between the city of Granbury, AMUD, and Episcopal Community Trust of Granbury, Texas, for the construction of approximately 800 linear feet of AMUD water line, storm drain improvements, installation of two fire hydrants, and installation of one streetlight. Approximate cost is $76,250, and the developer has chosen a check deposit which covers 100% of the cost, and a final plat of 4.885 acre tract of the Samuel M. Heron survey, abstract number 687, as lot 1 block 1 of the Episcopal Community Trust of Granbury, Texas addition. The property is located at Acton Highway, west of Willow Ridge Circle. Shad, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. So, this property is located in the ETJ. It's between the Highway 4 and James Road extension. It's on the north side of Acton Highway. This is the property highlighted in blue on this aerial. There were some structures on the property that have been removed. I'm not sure if the barn has been removed. It will be for the development. What they're proposing to do is build a church on the site. So, the property hasn't been formally platted. The P&amp;Z did see a preliminary plat, probably within the last five to six months, so they're following up with their final plat. They do have the FIA associated with it. Again, just as a note, this is in the ETJ, so we don't have any zoning authority, typically just solely the subdivision regulations that apply here. So, this is at north oriented, and I apologize. The Acton Highway is going to be over to the right-hand side of your screen, but this is a layout that they're proposing. Again, the building in gray, that's your, the gray area is your building footprint with the parking behind it. They have one drive approach. They've permitted this through Tech dot. Staff has a copy of this permit on file. The water service here is all AMUD, Acton Municipal Utility District. So, they have an extension that they're proposing, which their FIA covers those costs, and that's basically from the south side of Acton Highway where an existing line is. They'll bore the roadway and then extend it through their property, and then that fire height, or that water line, excuse me, will have some hydrants on it to, for suppression purposes. They do have a streetlight requirement, and they did make some drainage improvements to the property. Just as a background note, with the preliminary plat, the P&amp;Z and council did recommend approval of a variance to not extend sewer. There's no sewer approximate to the property. Therefore, they're going to utilize a septic system, which they'll permit that through Hood County with this being in the ETJ. So, tonight, with the plat, we don't have any variances associated with it. Again, those are the variances that were approved with the preliminary plat, to not improve Highway 4 to an urban standard, being a Tech dot facility, and to not extend sewer through the frontage due to the location of it. Here's our two applications, our formal applications, signifying that all DRC comments have been addressed, as well as our memo from the city engineer acknowledging that all his comments have been addressed. And lastly, this is P&amp;Z's recommendation. It was for approval by unanimous vote on August 20th, 2018. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor Protim.
All right, and again, this is a public hearing. We'll open it up to the public. I know John, I thought I saw John Hall come in earlier today, and council may want to direct some questions to him at some point. There he is. Any other, anybody from the public that would wish to speak to this? Since there is none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Council, any questions? With no discussion, no questions, I'll entertain a motion to consider the requests, the aforementioned requests by the Episcopal Community Trust of Granbury, Texas. We have a motion by Councilmember Reiner.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Corrigan. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, Shad, you're still with us.
I'm still here.
Public hearing, and consider approving ordinance number 18-54, approving a request of Tony and Tina Strama for an SUP to allow the operation of a four-guest suite, hosted bed and breakfast. The property is at 123 West Doyle Street.
Again, here's the property highlighted in blue. You're probably familiar with this. It's, the common name is the Captain's House. It's one of the city's local landmarks. Property's also located in our historic overlay, so here's the property again. It's just to the east of, in and of Lake Granbury, and it's about .1, little over .1 acres in size. The current zoning is R-10. That's a single-family residential zoning district, which allows them to have a hosted bed and breakfast if the P&amp;Z and council grant them a specific use permit. So, they've had a specific use permit in the past for a two-guest suite, bed and breakfast. That was approved in February 2017. What this application do is up the number of rooms from two to four. So, this is a portion of a platted lot of record. There's nothing here with this request that would require them to revisit any kind of a plat based on what they've submitted in their application. Again, in aerial, this might be a little outdated, I apologize, but it gives you the general location. What I'll add is the Strama zone, both the property highlighted in red, as well as the property directly to the south. The property to the south will be the primary residence. They will have a renter occupy the Captain's House. That's required to be a hosted bed and breakfast, and then utilize four of the five guest suites for, or utilize four of the five rooms for guest suites. So, again, talking about the property, the adjacency, there's not enough parking to support the bed and breakfast on the Captain's House lot, so they're required to have two spaces, ultimately six spaces is what they're required to have. However, there's a significant number of parking spaces located on the lot to the south, and although they own both lots, we require them to do a shared parking agreement in the event that one of the lots is sold off in the future. So, they've done that, and it grants them more than enough parking spaces per what they're required, and then that will get rolled into the SUP adoption ordinance if the council acts favorably tonight. So, again, these are photos, the front of the Captain's House on the right, and then kind of the access way to get to the parking on the side of the house. And the picture at the bottom is the residence, their primary residence, as well as those existing parking spaces that are located there, which will be shared. So, just a glimpse of the zoning ordinance as far as SUP submittals, you can see in the chart, R-10 zoning, which is residential, does require the SUP, as well as the definition of a hosted bed and breakfast. The supplemental standards, 1 and 17, mostly relate to one site plan being required, which they fulfilled, and then 17 goes into some of the regulations for bed and breakfasts, such as smoke alarms, striping of parking, and signage. This is the formal application submitted by the applicant requesting the four-guest suite, hosted bed and breakfast. Here are some guidelines or some pointers for council to consider when looking at an SUP. Use, is it harmonious? Is it reasonable? Does it have impact on surrounding developments? The next slide here is our notification. This being an SUP, we are required by zoning ordinance and state law to notify all property owners within 200 feet. We did that on August 9th. We notified 11, or sent out 11 public notices. We also posted this in the Hood County News. As of tonight, we've only received one notice, and that was in favor, so we didn't get any opposition notices for this. So, P&amp;Z's recommendation on August 20th was conditional approval. It was unanimous, and six oh, and the conditions are outlined here, 1 through 6. I'll leave these up here for a second, but other than that, that concludes my presentation. I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor Protim.
All right, so, again, this is a public hearing, and I know the Stramas are here. Did we miss anything?
No, sir, no. I want to thank you for the opportunity to share with me, and of course, it was the buying of Captain's House. Truly, we're heart and soul.
Could I get you to come up here? You're committed now. You've got to do name and address, and...
No, we've been very blessed to purchase this home. We put our heart and soul in the restoration of it.
You could start with name and address.
Anthony Strama, my wife's...
The mayor will get on to me if you don't.
123 West Doyle Street. Purchased the Captain's House in 2014, so we've put our heart and soul in the restoration of the home, and with that, we've had great success with the two-bedroom, two-bath SUP that Shad gave us earlier. Great reviews, returning customers with that. We did two more rooms, so we're excited about having a four-bed and four-bath, which is where it was before when the Pennells had it, from 2000, or 94 to 05, and so, we're excited about having a four-bed and four-bath bed and breakfast. And with that, we've had the opportunity to purchase a home behind us, and so, we will be there to support everything, but we do have a tenant staying there. It will be hosted. Just excited about having it, having, have the opportunity to have that, so we propose that to you to have it, four-bed and four-bath.
Very good. We're glad you're here. Any other, anybody else from the public would like to speak?
Can I, can I add something? We did have that as a bed and breakfast for several years, and I met Tina and Tony when they very first moved in, and so, I've walked with them step by step in questioning, and if you have not gone and looked at the inside, if you've not looked at the outside and what they have done, I encourage each of you to do that. We are blessed to have people who want to. You know how we feel about historic properties. So, to have someone, because he has a city and a state marker, to have someone that cares that much about the property that we renovated, and then they've taken it to the next level from the people that bought it from us, so I encourage you to go look at it, and everyone here, I encourage you to applaud them, encourage you to send them business, and I encourage you to thank them for what they have done to keep that pretty lady alive.
Thanks, Julia. Anybody else wish to speak to that? Well, at this point, we'll close the public hearing. Council, are there any discussion? Well, I'll entertain a motion to consider adopting ordinance number 18-54. With the conditions presented by the P&amp;Z, the parking lot shall be installed and inspected prior to any bed and breakfast activity on the site. The supplemental standards, 1 and 17, from section 4.2 of the zoning ordinance, including wired smoke alarms and all other listed requirements, shall apply to this bed and breakfast and shall be conformed prior to any bed and breakfast activity. The special use permit shall automatically expire within three years, or three years from the council approval, and only four bedrooms of the residence will be used for overnight guests per zoning ordinance requirements. Should the parking agreement become void, then the SUP will automatically become null and void. The primary use of the property will be for single-family residential. The residence shall be occupied as a permanent residence by either an owner or renter-manager of the bed and breakfast. If the resident is found to be no longer occupied as a permanent residence by the owner or renter-manager of the B&amp;B, then the SUP shall be deemed in violation of the zoning ordinance and automatically become null and void. So, I'll entertain a motion for this item.
Second.
So, we have a motion by Councilmember Reiner, and a second by Councilmember Couch. Any other discussion? With no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries. The next, we're going to, we're going to combine number eight and nine. Number eight is consider adopting ordinance 18-55, approving a request of John McConigal to amend the 2016 comprehensive plan for a .6889 acre tract of the Robert Merritt Survey, abstract number 335, to allow for retail office instead of low-density residential. Item number nine is consider ordinance 18-56, approving a request of John McConigal to rezone .6689, 6889 acre tract of the Robert Merritt Survey, abstract 335, from residential to light commercial. The property is located at James Road, north of Acton Highway. Shad, you're still with us?
I'm still here. So, thank you for opening those up together. I'll go through kind of the presentation for both of them, if you have any questions. Myself, I think an applicant's representative is here to answer those as well. The main purpose of this request is the future development of a law office building. The property, as you can see, is one, zoned residential, and two, it's unplatted. It was part of a preliminary plat that was approved a considerable time ago, back in 2005. Since then, as you can see by the zoning map, the pink area below the property depicted in blue, that designates commercial zoning. We've had subsequent requests, starting from Acton Highway and working its way up in the past, to plat and rezone property. You can see the uses there are primary, if you're familiar with the area, obviously are primarily more of your, your office type uses that are located there. So, because of our 2016 comprehensive plan, the adoption of that, it basically requires a comp plan amendment when we don't have zoning that's consistent with the comp plan. In this case, the property being zoned, R10 or single-family residential, it would require a zoning to light commercial to allow the law office. So, that's the genesis of these two requests tonight. A, the comprehensive plan amendment, what they're proposing to do is take this site from the, our, the low-density residential that's designated right now to retail office, which will be kind of the red area. So, essentially, what this land use plan amendment would do, if approved tonight, would amend this land use map. That area you see highlighted in blue would become the retail office or the red. Again, what low-density residential, obviously, this counts for all our single-family residential from our R7s up to our R12 zoning districts, typically two to six dwelling units per acre. The retail office designation is just that, it's going to be kind of your most restricted commercial uses. It doesn't allow really a lot or any outside activity. Generally, the uses are all internal to the structure. Just some snippets out of our comprehensive plan, talking about the compatibility of uses, as well as development proposals that don't meet the comprehensive plan and the process to go through for amending that plan. This is the application submitted by the applicant, which was included in your staff report packet, giving his reason and justification to change that land use designation. So, the P&amp;Z considered this on August 20th and recommended approval to amend the future land use, land use plan, and direct staff, city manager and staff, to change the land use map. They made a similar recommendation for the zoning change, and I'll get into that in a little bit. Again, tonight, these are the voting options available to council. It's either to amend the future land use plan or deny the future land use plan. In terms of denial, if it went that way, then, then the council should consider acting the same way on the zoning change, because then we wouldn't have a consistent zoning and comprehensive plan, land use plan. So, I'll get into this real quick and get into some more of the details, what the request of the zoning change is. Again, it's from R10 to LC, the commercial zoning district. Again, they're proposing a professional office on site. We've seen just a general site plan of it. There's not a site plan requirement for this zoning change tonight, but they submitted one. They're currently working through a plat of this property, which you guys should see, hopefully at the next coming rotation, some minor engineering associated with that that they're currently working through. So, this property, it's been the R10 since 2001. It was annexed roughly right before we did a comprehensive zoning rewrite in 2001. That property went from interim holding to R10. The adjacent lots to the south are currently zoned light commercial, and like I said, the preliminary plat was approved, excuse me, 2006 rather than 2005. And all the utilities will be AMUD, so they're currently working with AMUD through the plat. We'll have those details fleshed out by the time we get the plat in front of the city council. There's just a couple of trees that are on the site, a small clump, these have been verified, they're not protected, they're mesquite, so we won't have a TCP requirement for this rezoning. Office uses is permitted by rights, just a snippet of what the surrounding properties are. Obviously, everything to the north is zoned R10, all the way up to Acton Middle School. The properties to the east and west are not only undeveloped, but they're located in the, primarily in the ETJ, so we just have the strip of James Road on both sides in the city. This is just a, kind of a glimpse of how the building will lay out, their fire lanes, and things of that nature. Last, we did send out notice for both the, not the comprehensive plan change, but for the zoning change. We did that on August 9th, and we notified five property owners that are adjacent, that's signified by the yellow halo. We also published this in the Hood County News as required by state law and zoning ordinance, and as of tonight, we've received zero, zero letters in favor and zero letters in opposition to this request. And I think that concludes my presentation. Again, P&amp;Z did recommend approval of both the comprehensive plan change, as well as this zoning change by unanimous vote on August 20th, 2018. And that does conclude my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions if council has them. Again, we should have an applicant's representative or the applicant in the audience to answer any questions if you have those of him as well. So, with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor Proten.
Thanks, Shad. So, again, this is a public hearing. We'll go ahead and open it up to the public. Is there anybody that would like to speak to this? And we do have a representative from the property, so if you will hang tight, we will close the public hearing, but open it up for discussion with the council. Any questions, council? Well, I, so, just, just so everybody's clear here, we have a comprehensive plan for a reason.
That's correct.
And, and this is just kind of one of those things, it fits in with the properties adjacent to it.
That's correct. So, state law says if the city has a comprehensive plan, then zoning changes should be consistent with that comp plan. So, as part of our 2016 comprehensive plan update, we took it a little step, we took it a step further, and if we do have land use proposals that aren't consistent with the comp plan which occur, then we require that that comp plan be amended, so we're in compliance with state law, and your zoning ordinance matches your comp plan.
So, we don't take comprehensive plans lightly. I mean, we don't just say arbitrarily, we just do things.
That's, that was the intent of adding that process into the 2016 comp plan, yes, sir.
Very good. Okay, any other discussion, council? So, we'll entertain a motion to either amend or deny, and the first item is ordinance 18-55 for, to amend the 2016 comprehensive plan. So, the motion will be, and council will be, to amend or deny that.
Make a motion to amend the comprehensive plan.
We have, we have a motion to amend by Councilperson Corrigan.
Second.
And we have a second by Councilperson Reiner. Any other discussion, council? There's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, motion carries. The second item is number nine, and it's, it's, again, to amend or deny, so it'll be included in the motion. Ordinance number 18-56, to rezone that .6889 acre tract from R10 to LC. And I'll entertain that motion.
Second.
To amend?
To amend.
We have a motion to amend by Councilperson Reiner. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilperson Corrigan. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10 is a public hearing to consider approving a request of BGO Architects on behalf of Don Walker for acceptance of a concept plan in accordance with section 6.1.1D zoning ordinance on the 3.9 acres land described as Lot 1R, Block 1, Bridge Harbor condominium Shad?
Thank you. So, I'll give you a little bit of background. This is the property, as you can see here, highlighted in blue. It's located to the east of the Texaco, up at the intersection of 377 and Highway 144. What they're proposing to do here is a multifamily development, an age-restricted multifamily development for approximately 145 units. Again, the site's about 3.8 acres, so that would be about 38.16 dwelling units per acre that they're proposing with those 145 units. The building, sorry, the bullet points are a little odd. It's not 438.16 DUA, but it is four and five-story buildings that are, they are proposing. So, with this concept planning here, and I'll get into a little detail of what it does, they are attempting, or in the process right now, of going through review for submittal of a, a planned development zoning district, like I said, for multifamily. They also have a replat that's currently under review. The zoning ordinance, when an applicant or developer chooses to establish a planned development zoning district, it gives them the option to go through this concept plan approval to work out really some of the more aesthetic or bulk items that typically aren't associated with the detailed engineering. So, for example, in this case, maybe building height, density, things of that nature. And it's, it's designed as a kind of a workshop between the developer and the Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as the developer and city council, to flesh some of the items out that may be considered, or may have, maybe considered concerning to, to you all. So, they've, they've requested to utilize that option, and we'll go through some of the details of the project that they're proposing. Again, what the concept plan does is it offers that workshop opportunity. What it does not do is grant any kind of formal approval process. So, if a concept plan is accepted, they still have to come back with, with zoning, and like I said, they've currently got an application for both zoning with a, with a development plan, as well as a replat that's in review by staff. So, just a little background information, this property, you can see the current zoning SPD, that was established in 2006 for a similar type development. They revised it, again, in 2006 to reduce some of the items that you see in bullet points, the height, rear setback, they decreased the density. What happened, though, is that development ended up, the developer pulled out. The council at that time did grant the zoning approval with the condition that they, they worked through issues associated with the traffic impact analysis, as well as geotech for the actual soils on the site to see if it would sustain the building that was being proposed at that time. So, that never came to fruition, but our developers now are working through some of those issues associated with their PD request. So, again, I've hit most of these items as far as the concept plan, what it does and don'ts of it. Some of the elements for discussion tonight, I've provided this in the chart. I've got some comparisons from our base zoning regulations through what the current PD has established, and what's being proposed through the PD that Dulce Vita is proposing. So, you can see kind of some of the ups and downs as far as the height requirements, the bulk of the buildings, exterior materials, parking requirements, and overall density. Everything highlighted in yellow is what we currently have as part of our application submit, or application that was submitted. So, just a little information about this property, it's kind of unique in the fact that these roads that are accessed through it, they were typically, or I think started off as more of driveways to serve your McDonald's and Burger King. They have been dedicated to the city through kind of a easement right-of-way usage. The White Cliff that wraps around the north part of the property and down to the east side of the property, that's all private. So, that typically starts roughly around the Texaco site where it goes from public to private. They're proposing to utilize access points through White Cliff, as well as working through some details now with Brookshures to make sure they have rights access down to the So, when we do have the zoning change that comes forward, we will have to do another comp plan amendment. The property right now, as you can see here, is designated as retail office, so in order to zone it to high-density residential, which includes multifamily, we'll have that application. That would run concurrent with the future zoning change. Just wanted to point that out. So, here's a, here's their concept plan, what they're proposing. You can see along the north, well, in this case, the top side of the screen, which will be the east portion of the property, that's where they're proposing the actual building layout. Majority of their parking will be on the front side or the 144 side of the site, but the building will make the most of proximity to the east property line. Here's the building elevations that are proposed. So, I talked about these being four and five-story. This is kind of an example, your top right, of what that'll look like. So, how it tiers down, it'll have an ultimate height relatively all the same, but it'll tier down on the lakeside. So, you'll see more stories from the lakeside presentation than you will from 144. The building itself is what's being proposed, and what'll be part of the PD requirement is to reduce the overall masonry content. As far as stone goes, it's still, it's still got a significant amount of stone, but what their request will be is to utilize more stucco on the building. Again, this is another lakeside presentation. And I'll let the applicant get kind of the details. They do have some rooftop gathering space and maybe some other amenities that they may want to discuss. Again, just several different perspectives of building elevations. What we did ask regarding the height, the applicant was able to provide us, was kind of a point perspective view of what these buildings might look like if you're driving down 377, as well as, we got one from the city beach, so this is that perspective. You can see relative of what it'll look like, and this is taken right before the 377 bridge heading west. This one's a little harder to see, but this was taken from city beach. You can see those, the buildings are kind of right in the middle, another perspective. And this is just their concept landscape plan. So, internally, like I said, we'll have a majority of the parking, a lot of the parking spaces, they'll, they're proposing to have carports on. A lot of your landscaping will be along the rear or east portion of the property, as well as right at the primary entrance of the property. Their landscape plan, we'll roll that into the PD. We're still finalizing some details on that as well. So, just as a comparison, some of our recent multifamily developments, I picked some of the, some, some recent ones and some not-so-recent ones. Lake Villas probably being the most recent one. If you're familiar, that's the project on the Loop and Pearl Street. So, their height, you can see kind of relative to what's being proposed. They were granted three stories, 46-foot max height, 22 dwelling units per acre. They did meet their parking requirement, but they did receive an allowance for stucco as primary material. Again, that was a planned development zoning district. For Braz's Crossing, that's the one on Hill Boulevard, again, three stories, they were granted a 50-foot max height requirement. They were well with under their dwelling, dwelling unit per acre requirement, again, multifamily's 18. They did reduce parking to approximately 1.72 spaces per unit, but they met their masonry requirement. And then the watermark, obviously, that's four stories, 55-foot max height, about 30 dwelling units per acre. And then the lodge, three stories, that was a little bit of an older building that we kind of retrofitted into a PD. 40 to 45-foot height, approximately 35 dwelling units per acre, also with the reduced parking So, just again, want to emphasize what the concept plan does, that this doesn't grant them any kind of formal... them any kind of formal approval process. It's really just a workshop opportunity. We were supplied by the applicant a letter that was signed by the developer applicant acknowledging that. They just, again, wanted to exhaust this opportunity to get before the P and Z and council to kind of go over some more of the aesthetic issues, the bulk items, building placement, building aesthetics, density, height, things of that nature. Although we're not required per zoning ordinance, we did want to start the conversation with the adjoining property owners, so we did notify. Six property owners were notified, and we got two letters of support based off of that notification.
Burger King and McDonald's?
Pretty, it's, that's, yes, sir. I believe that's correct.
I see that.
So, on August twentieth, the P and Z, we provided some options to the P and Z. The P and Z didn't express any concern over some of the topic items, you know, again, height and density and things of that nature. There were some comments made about sidewalks, as well as crossings on one forty-four. Again, we're still working through sidewalk issues on the plat and zoning, TIA, geotech report, all of that information is currently in the process, so I don't have a lot of information to give you about that tonight. We will have the detailed information once they get, once they've addressed all their comments and we have applications to provide to you guys or have you consider. But, I just wanted to let you know that, that is in the hopper and we're currently reviewing it. So, the voting options tonight, it's really acceptance or not accept, or accept with modifications of the concept plan. If the concept plan's accepted, what it does is initiates the developer to submit an actual formal zoning change request with development plan within eighteen months of the acceptance. We've already got it under review. Hope to have that in the next rotation or two for you guys to look at. And I think that touches on everything I have. I will turn it over to the developer to state anything that I may have missed. And with that, that concludes my presentation, Mayor Tim.
All right. Well, this is a public hearing, and we will go ahead and take any questions from the public if they'd like to do so at this point. And I would like the developer to come on up if he could. Because I would imagine we've got a few questions for you.
Of course.
If you would state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Mark Hill with BGO Architects, and I live at ten twenty-nine Basilwood Drive in Capella, Texas.
Okay. Council, do you have any questions?
Uh, Mayor Tim.
Mr. Couch.
This is a question for Chad. You know, I've been on the council for six years now, and I think it's the first time that this process has been used. So, I want you to explain again, you know, if we vote in favor of this, what are we really, what are we voting in favor of?
I think, so really what you're voting, and you're not really making any approval vote tonight, it's more of just an acceptance of it. And what that does is it kind of gives the applicant the, it makes them aware that you don't have any glaring issues with kind of what's coming on the table when they have a formal zoning application. So, what this does is give you a chance to say, we're okay with some of the bulk-related items, like the height of the building or the density that you're proposing. You, those elements are fine, but we acknowledge that you're coming back to us with the formal zoning change application and a plat application, where we're going to really get to hammer out the more engineering details like water and sewer, traffic impacts and things like that. But, since that's currently in the hopper, what we don't want to do is have them wait when we have this opportunity. They present an application to you, and we like everything, but we don't like the height of the building, or something along those lines. So, this gets a chance to flesh that out and basically give the applicant some kind of, you know, warm feeling that, hey, what we're proposing is no, not so far out there that we're going to have to come back and, you know, drop the height of the building to get an affirmative vote from council.
So, I mean, I understand, I'm just trying to understand the benefit of this.
It's really just a workshop. So, the benefit is, the benefit is for both council to save you guys some time if there's something glaringly concerning to you on this application that you can flesh it out now, so when you have a formal application come to you in the future, that that's something that's already been fleshed out at this point in time and you don't have to address at that point in time. It also gives kind of the applicant direction on, yeah, we're going to keep proceeding with what we've got on the table.
And that's so he doesn't spend architectural money or drawing money, draw a five-story building when we, he comes back and we say, no three. Is that correct?
Precisely. And of course, they're designing engineering and things like that, water suppression based off the design of this building. So, all of that gets altered too if those, you know, small details like height and things are a problem or a concern.
Okay.
Any other questions, council?
Mayor Tim.
Ms. Ryder.
I happen to actually like this building. I think it's beautiful. Based on what's around us right now, I know Watermark, it used to be Watermark, Waterview is about the same height, conceptually. Love the name. You can't go wrong with Sweet Life.
That's right.
My concern, and this may not be, may or may not be the right time for it, but I feel compelled to bring it up because I think part of our job up here is to look to the future. And I understand that it's fifty-five and older. Will there in the future, potentially this building could be sold, you know, you never know what is going to happen? And does it change from fifty-five and older to multifamily? Then we're talking about younger kids trying to cross one forty-four, which is already a nightmare, or the density changes, you know, parking? What do you foresee happening in the future if it is sold? Is there going to be a contractual issue where they, it needs to continue to be fifty-five and older?
Well, let me first say, this is a HUD-backed mortgage, and the stipulations and the requirements of that loan say that the age restriction must stay in place. Now, that's a forty-year loan. Conceivably, someone could come along and want to buy it in ten or fifteen years, but the chances of you wanting to pay off that loan, you'd have to have a huge quantity of cash or see a real escalation in property values to be able to come in and just wipe that mortgage out. You would want to keep it in place for the forty years because the money's so cheap. But, there is always a remote possibility that that could occur, and if there was, you know, some other legal means that you would need to be able to make that deal work, you know, perhaps a deed restriction or something like that, then we could certainly look into it.
That would be my biggest concern for the future. Maybe that's Chris Kaufman's question.
And, Jeremiah Sorrell.
And council, I'll tell you, the staff had the same concerns just based on the parking regulations for age-restricted or a lot less than your typical multifamily regulations. So, we've looked into this. We've gotten some formal letters regarding how their funding works. I think we're looking to take that a step further and see what, and Jeremy, you may have some insight on this, but not only restricting it through zoning regulations, but also something that's a filed and discoverable document, that's where the city's not the only ones that are, it's not the staff's responsibility to make sure, the city's responsibility to ensure this remains multifamily. We haven't worked all those details out. We definitely will before we bring a zoning application to at least have an idea of how to proceed.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes, sir. Are these at-market rate rentals, or are they?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
These, you know, we're looking for this to be a luxury-type product, so people can age in place in Granbury, you know. A lot of times, people want to downsize, they don't want to leave their hometown, but they've had enough of a house and a yard and all that stuff, and they want to have someone else do it for them. And that's the niche that we're looking for.
Well, I'll tell you, when I moved to this town, when I came to this town, I saw a billboard over there that had a picture of something similar to this. I drove around for years looking for that building, and it still doesn't exist. And it, I think that sign rotted off twice. But, so, yeah, and this is an exciting project. Let me ask you, and it looked like previously the planned development was a six-story building. We're cutting that to five. But if you look at the drawings, it looks like from parking lot level, it's four stories.
Yes, it is. It's actually, so it's four stories with a walkout basement. So, that lower level will only have dwelling units on one side, and that's facing the lake. So, it's kind of a split level, and it technically is a basement. It's not even considered a floor by the building code.
And I guess, one of my question, one of my concerns up here would be fire. Okay? So, I think I'll defer to Mr. Corrigan as far as fire. Capabilities with the current equipment, assuming we, well, when we get a new ladder truck, what are the capabilities of fighting a five-story fire versus a four-story fire here?
We've got a hundred and five-foot ladder on our department here in Granbury. Your difference, your difference in fighting fires is basically just how much, how much water are you going to be able to put on it? We all understand that, you know, it's in the city limits, it's going to be sprinkled. That's one thing. My concern, if I may, would not so much beyond the actual firefighting aspect, because the buildings are built to have other options if the ladder can't reach to that. The roof is obviously concerned. But my, my primary concern would be whether it's a fifty-five and older, excuse me, or just any type of family living there. In the event that something happens and we have to rescue someone out of that fifth floor, there's no way we can do that out of the window, whereas in a four-story building, we have that ability. I would feel more comfortable if it was three and four, personally, but that just, that may just be me.
Well, there will be standpipes, obviously, in the stairwells. The building is compartmentalized, so you have horizontal exits, which, you probably know what that means, but for the layperson, that means there's actually a firewall within the building, which allows you to move from one portion to the building to another. And there's a two-hour wall there that would allow you to move to a safer area.
Right.
And, you know, those doors automatically close, and it adds a level of security that I think is really helpful. You know, we can, you can always go to a type thirteen sprinkler system, and we could do away with those firewalls, but, you know, we stay with the thirteen R, and then we break up the building accordingly.
Right.
Right, thank you. And I think our attorney has something to say as well.
Oh, just briefly. As to the age restriction issue that Shad was talking about, it's kind of the beauty of this conceptual idea of bringing us forward, is we haven't put a lot of work into that. Sure, there could be a restriction of some sort, or maybe some other companion document that's attached to it, but now they're on notice of that, and so that's something that they will bring to us to present, as well as the fire issues.
And I might just address the fire issues that, obviously, they're going to build it to meet the fire code that we have adopted. While rescuing someone from the fifth floor may or may not be feasible, I can promise you that there's other buildings in Texas that they can't rescue from the window either.
True.
We're just looking at something different for our community that they haven't seen in the past. So, the interior firewalls, like you're talking about, are going to be required with the fire sprinkler. I think there should be a great level of comfort knowing that the fire code's being added, so we appreciate that. And we know that we might get that happen.
Absolutely. And Councilmember Corrigan?
Yes.
The building does have a fire pump, so we will definitely be able to get the volume necessary to run those sprinklers.
Right, yeah, and that's what I'm saying. I'm not, not so concerned on the actual fighting the fire as having to rescue someone off of that, from the backside off of that fifth floor, but...
Very good. Mr. Couch.
I'm assuming you have different floor plans, or you have a general square footage at your?
Yeah, absolutely. We've got a variety of one- and two-bedroom units, and they range in square footage from six hundred and twenty-three square feet up to eight sixty-one, that's the one-bedrooms, and then the two-bedrooms are eleven hundred to thirteen forty-five, roughly. And we have about a sixty-forty split between one-bedrooms and two-bedrooms.
And you have anticipated the price per square foot, or?
You know, I wish the owner was here to speak to that, but I know he's looking to the higher end of the market. And I think part of the, you know, part of the struggle with this piece of property has been able to get enough density on there. When you talk about going from, from a four- and five-split to a three-four split, you just can't get the density to make your pro forma work. And I imagine that is probably why these other deals have fallen through. I don't know that for sure, but when talking with the owner and, you know, how the, all the numbers work, you know, we back into a number of units that we need to get to make the whole deal work.
Yeah, it looked like previously there were fewer units. Is that correct? Yeah. Okay. Any other questions, council? And I neglected to do this earlier, but I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. If there's no more discussion by the council, so, we're going to, the motion is to accept or not accept the conceptual plan by BGO Architects on behalf of Don Walker in accordance with section six point one D zoning ordinance on approximately three point nine acres of land, lot one R, block one, Bridge Harbor condominium addition. So, we're going to go with one of these three options. Accept the concept plan as submitted and acknowledge that a formal development plan with rezoning request to the PD be submitted within eighteen months of acceptance by the city council. Number two, accept the concept plan with suggestions and or modifications and acknowledgement that a formal plan will be submitted within eighteen months, or do not accept the concept plan. So, at this point, I'll entertain a motion.
I think we've all kind of given some suggestions in some form or another, so I'll make a motion to accept the concept plan with suggestions or modifications, option number two.
And what are those suggestions?
As previously stated by council.
Well, that's a, that's a blank slate. You've got to be, we've got to be specific here.
Okay. Then I will withdraw my motion and change my motion to accept the concept plan, number one.
So, we have a motion to accept the concept plan as submitted and acknowledge that a formal development plan with rezoning to the PD be submitted within eighteen months of acceptance by the council. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilman Couch. With no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thanks so much. Next item, public hearing and consider adopting ordinance eighteen dash five seven, approving a request of the City of Granbury to amend ordinance number zero one dash eight one nine, the City of Granbury zoning ordinance, article seven, section seven point five, table of temporary signs to modify the permitted districts and use regulations pertaining to thirty-two square feet, non-illuminated, realty signs.
So, thank you, council. This is really kind of a cleanup item. We've had quite a few projects either on the books or have gotten approved for either some large residential developments or some large multifamily developments. We actually had a request that came before us, a sign... We actually had a request that came before us, a sign permit. We already have an allowance for these 32-square-foot, they call them non-illuminated realty signs. We kind of defined the name a little better. I'll get to that in the next, next slide. Their current allowance is, obviously, if there's a big project coming, let's say an HEB or something along those lines, then they can go out there and put a wooden 32-square-foot sign to say, "Coming soon," and it helps them advertise their development. Those districts that it's allowed in are all commercial. So, you couldn't do them for multifamily and you couldn't do them to advertise some of the large residential developments, which typically are either on the same scale or larger. So, in an effort to be kind of more developer-friendly, we looked at that and are proposing these modifications to allow it. So, I'll get right to them. Everything that you can see highlighted is what we're proposing to modify. Just really on the top one, that's your typical real estate sign that you would see on a single, single-family lot. All we did with that regulation was just give it a name, Realty Development, Single-Family Lot. We did the same thing for the 32-square-foot sign, but we really got into the districts. So, what we added is, yes, these are permitted in all multifamily districts and they're permitted for single-family districts if associated with an approved subdivision containing 20 or more lots. The size restriction, 32 square feet, eight foot in height, those were existing. We didn't touch those. For the time limit, again, these are temporary signs. They are not permanent. Typically, they run concurrent with the building permit. We elaborated on that a little bit and basically said that the signs in multifamily or for the single-family districts that qualify, that those signs are concurrent with the building permit once they get a final inspection or a CO, or they apply for a permanent subdivision monument sign, that that, that sign advertising has to come down. As far as requirements, again, the one per lot that was associated with just your commercial districts, we looked at for subdivision, if you have more than one street frontage, then you could do one per street frontage as well, so you could get it on all sides of the property. That is the modifications that we're proposing. Nothing else are we looking to change. Again, this is temporary signs and they will be associated with building permits. P&amp;Z looked at this and recommended approval by unanimous vote on August 20th. So, now we're presenting this to city council.
Thanks, Chad.
And that concludes my presentation.
So, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak to this? So, at this point, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, any questions? No questions? So, the motion will be to amend the ordinance number 01-819, the City of Granbury zoning ordinance, Article 7, Section 7.5 for temporary signs. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilman Couch.
Second.
Second by Councilman Reiner. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. She gave me permission, Gary. So, next item, public hearing and consider approving the request of Kim Lansford of, to voluntary annex approximately 14.246 acres of land within the Mylum County School Land Survey, Abstract 348, into the city's corporate boundaries. We need to consider granting said petition and consider adopting ordinance 18-58, providing for voluntary annexation of said property. Chad, you're carrying this meeting. Just keep going.
I will do that. So, as you stated, this is a request for voluntary annexation. So, if you look at the map on the right-hand side of the screen, everywhere that's kind of got the red color, that's our current city limits boundary. The property that's, that's highlighted in blue, that's the annexation request. It's part of a total 36-acre property, but the city limits bisects it. This property is proposed to be a developed for, developed, excuse me, for a mix of residential, approximately 105 single-family residential lots and then a larger commercial lot that's actually at the hard corner of Weatherford Highway and Loop 567. So, they're working through staff right now. They've submitted a zoning change application as well as a preliminary plat that we're, that's currently in review by DRC. In order to zone the property that's outside of the city, it has to come into the city. And in order to do that, we have to go through this voluntary annexation request. So, the developer is working with the property owner. Property owner submitted us this voluntary annexation request. We can do this by one reading because of sparsely populated area. That's the Texas Local Government Code regulations. There's, it's undeveloped. It's less than half a mile in width, so it qualifies for that. The only, well, I'll go through this real quick. I may have to go back a couple of slides. So, again, this is the preliminary plat that's currently under review. The large lot to your left-hand side, that's the commercial lot that may be developed or cut up in the future. Primarily what the developers right now is focusing on are the single-family, so you can see how that lays out. And then the red line that I have through the property is the approximate city limits boundary. So, everything to the north and west of that red line is what's being annexed. That's going to be approximately 14 acres. Here's our applications that were submitted requesting the voluntary annexation. This was by the property owner, Kim Lansford. Again, this is Section 43. Uh, let me go through the Texas Local Government Code and I'll kind of go through the nuance, I guess you could say, of this property. But Section 4302A of the Local Government Code, it does allow annexation for one reading. If the city grants petition for annexation and adopts the ordinance, the requirements are, it's a half mile or less in width, which this is. It's contiguous to the city, which it is, and vacant or without residence, which it also is. You'll see on the left is a letter from Mesa Grande. I'm going to go back real quick. Sorry about that. I got, I did so well and then right here at the end of the meeting, I just, I apologize.
Shall we just go ahead and go into executive session?
I think I will be done in two seconds here, maybe. Again, I am so sorry. So, um...
We can, we can go ahead and just ask questions. That's okay.
Yeah, go for it. I do want to touch on one thing. So, this, this slide that you see here, the, the water service boundaries, everything that's being annexed is currently located in Mesa Grande's CCN or their water service area. They've provided us a letter acknowledging that they, they are willing to work with staff and the developer and the city to transfer this from their water service area to the city's water service area. So, they have no problem with this annexation commencing. They've also surprised, or given us information that they will help us work through kind of getting those maps redrawn with, I think Rick Crownover and his team are currently kind of trying to get those done with the state. These are all set up by the state, the water service maps. So, that's the example letter that you have on the left-hand side. They're in total agreement with this annexation. Staff does recommend approval of the annexation request. With that being said, the council options are vote to consider, or what we would recommend is vote to consider and grant said petition as well as vote to consider and approve the ordinance providing for the voluntary annexation. Again, we have the zoning change and plat under review and hope to have that to you at a subsequent rotation in the future. And with that, I think that touches all my comments. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Again, this is a public hearing. Do we have anybody from the public that would like to speak? So, at this point, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, any discussion? There is no discussion. There are two parts to this. One is to consider and grant the said petition. And if that passes, then we will consider and approve an ordinance providing for voluntary annexation of the property. So, I will entertain a motion to approve the request of Kim Lansford to voluntary annex, voluntarily annex the 14.246 acres within the Mylum County School Land Survey, Abstract 348. We have a motion by Councilman Couch to consider granting said petition. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Councilman Corrigan. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next part of this is consider adopting ordinance number 18-58, providing for voluntary annexation. I'll entertain a motion. We have a motion by Councilmember Reiner.
Second.
We have a second by Councilman Corrigan. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Again, motion carries. Thanks for being here, Chad. So, our final item is the second public hearing on the proposed ad valorem tax rate of .399385 for fiscal year 2018 and 2019 for the City of Granbury. A vote will occur on September 18th at the regular city council meeting. Mr. City Manager, would you like to add anything to this?
That, it's the same tax rate that we've adopted for the previous years. It does generate about $79,000 in new revenue based on the growth that we've experienced, but the tax rate remains the same.
And again, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak to this item from the public? With no reaction, I will take that as a no and we will close the public hearing. And no action needs to be taken on that. I now declare that the Granbury City Council is convened into open session and that all the members are present, with the exception of Mayor Hewlett and Councilmember Allen. The city council will go into a closed session pursuant to the provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections. Sections 51.086, Certain Public Power Utilities, Competitive Matters. Section 551.087, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations. Section 551.071, Consultation with Attorney. And Section 551.072, Deliberations Regarding Real Property. We'll now go in. So, at this time, we will reconvene into open session. Are there any items or discussion by the council? Yes, sir. I'm trying to hurry, sir. Any actions or discussion by the council?